Thank you, councilors. Before we start the meeting tonight, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that since our last meeting, the city of Peabody has suffered some tremendous loss and lost some great people, and I just wanted to acknowledge them. I know at certain public events the mayor has, and I know most of the names are announced, but just for the public, just to let know that, as I said, the city really has lost some significant civic people who have really been a great part of this community. We lost Mr. Danny Pimenta, 27-year firefighter; Marilyn Limangello, a 31-year city clerk; Mr. William Toomey, 26-year city councillor; and also, we lost someone, we've taken way too young, a young lady by the name of Randy Liminger, 22-years-old. She was a valedictorian of her class at Westfield State that just graduated. So, as we say the prayers of allegiance and have a moment of silence, I'd like to ask, take a couple of extra seconds and say the prayers for their families and thank them for everything they've done for the city of Peabody over their many years of service. Thank you. Now, a moment of silence, please.
Move approval to the record, Mr. President?
Move approval for records, Council Gould. This meeting is being televised live on Cable Channel 9 and being taped by Peabody Council Access TV and also being recorded by a city council stenographer. Councilors, if no one has any objection, we're going to go to item 7B on the agenda, communication from his mayor. Your honor?
Good evening, councilors. Great to be here. I'm here today to present to you the appointment of Julie Daigle as our city treasurer. I think all of you know Julie, familiar with her work for the city of Peabody. I'll give you a little bit of background about Julie that you may not have known. Julie is a graduate of the Merrimack College with a bachelor's degree in business administration and accounting, and has worked for the administration of three Peabody mayors during her 17 years in public service. She began her career in government as a paid intern in the office of former Mayor Peter Turegian. The internship continued throughout her college years and culminated with a full-time position as senior treasury clerk under Mayor Michael Bonfanti. Later promoted to grants manager for the Department of Planning and Community Development. Julie was responsible for processing payroll, tracking time and attendance, and managing accounts payable and receivable, as well as obviously taking care of the grant applications. In 2004, I appointed Julie the city's first business liaison, a role in which she cultivated relationships with local and regional banking executives, as well as CEOs of some of the city's largest corporations, and of course was involved heavily in the Chamber of Commerce here in the city of Peabody. We interviewed several qualified individuals for the position of city treasurer, and I want to thank the team that handled the interviews, our city financial director, Michael Gingras, our city auditor, Mary Martin, and our human resources director, Beth O'Donnell. But we felt that Julie was the best fit for this position. In addition to having firsthand knowledge of the inner workings of the treasurer's office, Julie brings outstanding leadership and top-notch customer service abilities to this very important role. I'm very proud to present as the city treasurer, Julie Daigle.
Motion to receive, 7B, please.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. In addition to what the mayor told you, I think you've gotten to know me the past 17 years as my role as business liaison and other roles, and I hope that you've learned that I really love the city of Peabody and I really love working for the city of Peabody. So, I realize that this job is a great responsibility, and I would take it very seriously and give it my best effort to not disappoint you all, as well as the mayor, hoping for a smooth transition with the help of the current or retired treasurer, Jeanne Carnavale, and thank you for your time in reviewing my resume.
Counselors? And some cheers.
Great pick, Mayor. That's all I can say. Great pick. Julie, you're gonna do great, I can tell.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Council Greville and Council Gould.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to congratulate Julie on her new position, and I know it's gonna be a lot of work, but I certainly think that you're up to the task of doing that work, and, you know, she's got the tenacity of a distance runner, as well as the, she's got a great mind. I've had a chance to work with her in the Downtown Committee, as well as at the chamber, and I feel like she's gonna do a great job for us. So, thank you very much.
Council Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations, Julie. Known you for a few years, and you give 100% to everything you do, and I'm sure you'll do a wonderful job taking care of our money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council McGinn.
I would also like to offer my congratulations, and if there's no other councilors, I'd be ready to make a motion.
Yes, Council McGinn. Thank you.
I'd like to move to approve the appointment of Julie Daigle, 21 Fay Avenue, Peabody, Mass., 0960, to the position of city treasurer for a term to expire 12/31/2017. So moved.
Hear the motion. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilors Manning, Martin.
Present.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Greville.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Motion carries 8 to 1-1 present.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Council.
If I could, I'd just like to, I would just like to take a moment to say thank you to Jeanne Carnavale for the work and effort that she put into, not only the investments that the community has made with their treasury, with the treasury operation, as well as the significant effort that she's put in to help with, you know, ensuring that she works closely with collectors and that, you know, the city gets everything that is due. She's done a great job and kinda worked silently in the background, but thank you very much for all the service, Jeanne.
Thank you, Council Greville. Mr. Mayor?
And if I could, I certainly think that Julie is going to leave a big hole to fill in her position as the business liaison, but certainly I think she's gonna have big shoes to fill with the retirement of Jeanne Carnavale, and Council Greville said it very well. And I want to thank Jean, she's here tonight. I want to thank her for her work the last six years as our city treasurer. Prior to that, she worked six years as the sealer of weights and measures for the city of Peabody, and there's nobody that cares more for this community and wants the city to succeed more than Jean. She's done an outstanding job taking that office on, and it is a very difficult job, requires a great deal of work, and she's just done an excellent job fitting in with our finance team, and really, I just feel tremendous about our finance team here in the city of Peabody. I want to thank her for her years of service, her loyalty and dedication to the city of Peabody, and a special thank you for staying on these last couple of months to kinda stabilize the office as we move forward with the hiring of Julie. She's a friend, she's somebody who I have a tremendous amount of respect for, and she's done an outstanding job, as I said, for the city of Peabody. I do have a plaque here that I wanted to present to her on behalf of the city of Peabody. It is my honor to congratulate Jean for your hard work, dedication, and commitment on behalf of our citizens. We gratefully acknowledge the many outstanding contributions you have made to our city during your years of service. Please accept our sincere gratitude and best wishes for many years of continued health, happiness, and prosperity. And I know that she's gonna be working with Julie over the upcoming weeks and months to help her with the job, and I know that she's gonna move forward and do that for the city of Peabody, and I'm very grateful for that. So, Jeanne, can you please come on up?
Who authorized this purchase? Well, first, I really would just like to thank the mayor for believing in me and believing that I could do the job. I think over the last six years, we've really done a lot of really good things. We have a lot more to do, and I'll always be here, you know, whenever the city needs me, but I'm blessed to be able to move on to the next phase of my life, and I think my fellow alumni from Merrimack College is gonna do a great job here. I think that there are some really good things in place, and the city's finances are good, and the team is really an A-team. It really is. I don't think you really realize, but you see certain people, but there are so many people in my office, the collector's office, that work so hard, and we have to get down and dirty and get into the trenches every day for, you know, dealing with people who are struggling and what have you, but I am really proud to stand here today. I didn't think I would be this emotional, but I just wish Julie the best, and thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for supporting me. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, item 4A hearings, Class 1 motor vehicle license. If the city clerk will preside the donors?
Notice as hereby given that the city council, the city of Peabody, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, August 17, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Franco-Weggen Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., on the application from Peabody Motorsports, Inc., DBA BMW of Peabody 7 Centennial Drive, Peabody, Mass., requesting a Class 1 motor vehicle license at said Centennial Drive, Peabody, Mass. Peabody City Council Councillor Joel D. Sasla, City Council President.
Thank you. If the petitioner would like to come up and tell us what you'd like to do. Please state your name and your address, and if you can speak clearly into the mic. Thank you.
My home address? That speaker needs to be replaced. My name's Warren Waugh. I'm the managing partner of the Lion Waugh Auto Group, specifically in this case BMW of Peabody or Peabody Motorsports. I live at 31 Muscle Point Way in Gloucester.
Would you like to tell us a little bit what you'd like to do?
What I'd like to do? So, we are, we've been in the city since 1994, and I was just going back in time and counting the projects that we've had to do to commit and make the manufacturers happy, specifically in this case BMW, and it's called Corporate ID. And we've, we've got approval from the building inspector to start our next project, which I think would be just at that location, I think the eighth time we've, we've done construction there. We just finished one in 2010, and now we're doing it again. This one's a lot more involved, and it requires us to move cars, find storage space elsewhere, move a lot of our staff from one building to another building while one building's being built and then another one's getting renovated or used for offices and sales. We've, we've got three locations. Two of them are on 114, and we consider it one. They're, they're adjoined by a bridge, if you can see it from 114, and then our other location is 7th Centennial Drive, and that's a service satellite administrative offices. There's a showroom there for display and then storage for our inventory. So, what we see happening is we're gonna have to move more cars over there, we're gonna have to put display cars there, and we're gonna have to probably house a few salespeople there, obviously with your approval. So, at first, I just thought, well, okay, well, that's not a problem, we'll just do it. And then I recalled several years ago that the way a dealer license works is you, it's specific to the address. So, I don't want to get myself in a situation where a salesperson's selling cars over there and the transaction's invalid. So, that's pretty much the request, is to be able to do it on the up and up, and, you know, this project's gonna last at least two years. It's not, it's painful, really painful. So, I guess that's it. That's the request.
Thank you. Anybody from the public like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anybody from the public like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anybody like to speak against the petitioner? Anybody like to speak against the petitioner? Being none, Council Greville.
Thank you, Council President, and Council Turco is not here this evening, is in full support of doing this. I'm honored to be able to present on behalf of this request because Warren has been not only a good community citizen, but he's also been a good community friend to me and to many of you as well. You know, there, there isn't an event that sort of goes by that you don't see silently some aspect of Lion Waugh Motors, the motor group, being involved in, and whether it's financial contributions or logistical support, they're always there, and they're always willing to help out the community. The thing I learned early about Warren from my working with him on building the new YMCA was that he's not ever looking to do something to get something, he's looking to do something so that the city gets something, so that it's a better place for all of us. He told a remarkable story one night at the anniversary of the Y opening that I believe had everybody in, pretty much in awe as to why a person who's done so well and done so much is willing to look back and give back to a community because of his appreciation of what it took to get where he got. And there wasn't a, you could hear a pin drop when he was speaking in the room. He didn't need a microphone or any speakers for that evening. When he called and, you know, talked about having to do what he has to do at this point in time, and really, the choice of him changing that facility up on 114 is not his. For him to sustain his dealership license, he has to maintain his ID, and for him to maintain his ID, he gets pushed into doing whatever he has to do to comply with the corporate responsibility. And I could see he was in a little bit of a conundrum there because, you know, he knows back in the day, prior to our zoning change, it was a difficulty in terms of having by right the ability to sell cars. So, he knew he was asking for something. Fortunately for him, we made that change in the zoning so that he has that ability, and I think if anybody hasn't been to 7th Centennial Drive, take a ride up there and take a look. It's probably one of the best-kept facilities in the entire park, and it's set way back, it doesn't have issues with neighbors because it's in a zone by itself, and it has plenty of storage facility for his inventory. The showroom is second to none in terms of the ability to display, and they, you could literally hold, and we have on occasion, hold a cated event and eat there because the back is so clean that you literally could put tables up and serve dinner. And again, he's done that, you know, for a number of events, so not only does he give greatly to Peabody, but he's also given greatly to a number of causes. One near and dear to me, the Education Foundation, but, you know, he does things for the Cancer Society, the, I mean, you name it, he's involved in it, and he's always in the background just quietly doing it. So, literally, I don't think this impacts any business in the area, I don't think it impacts any neighbor in the area. I think he's perfectly positioned there to be able to carry on his operation, and it would be a great thing for this city to be able to give back to him one time for all that he's given, including recently, I guess, two electricas, which was kind of an interesting thing to find out about, which was really nice to our police department. So, I'm in full support, I hope all of my fellow councilors would be in full support as well.
Thank you, Council Greville. Open up to the floor, Council Mazzullis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Warren, I don't know if you remember me, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you, I'd have gone over and said hello, and I don't mean to embarrass you, but you've made me keep a secret for over 20 years, and I'm not good at keeping secrets, but I kept yours. When you came in to get your license for the BMW dealership and it was approved, I got on the council floor right after that, and I was talking about a park that needed repair down on Larus Road, and the city was in financial trouble at the time, and we just didn't have it. I got a phone call, it was him. He says, "Come to my office." He gave me a check for $13,500 and said, "Fix that park." I let the secret out, Warren, sorry, but, you know, you've been really good to the city, you've been good to the neighborhood, and I'm proud to know you. You're just a credit to the city of Peabody. So, I'm in support. I'm not in support because you gave me that $13,000, now I'm support, okay, just to get that off the record. Okay, thank you.
Council Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm not supporting this because I just bought a car from you, but that's another story. One question to you, to Mr. Waugh. Where is this license coming from? Is this going to be a second-class one? Are you purchasing one? Is there one available?
Well, the license, I believe, is granted by the city or approved by the city, and then it's just paperwork after that.
Oh, I didn't know if there was limits on, I didn't know where the permit was. So, you have a permit now for the BMW store?
I do.
Where it is, and now you want to move it up to Centennial Park?
Right.
So, you're gonna have, that's just transferring over? Is that how we're doing it?
Council, point of information, so, used car licenses, we do have a cap, new car licenses, there is no cap. So, this will be a second license at a second location.
So, at the end of the one-to-two-year period, would one of those be given back?
I guess if we move, you know, if we're...
Because I would assume at some point the other dealerships are gonna need upgrades too, and I don't know where you would move those cars to.
It seems to be never-ending, the construction that we do. I mean, it's a five-to-seven-year cycle right now.
Okay, yeah, look, I remember we gave the permit for Centennial Park, was it 2009 or '08, and it's been, you know, when there was reservations at the time, we didn't want to put automobiles up in Centennial Park, and it's quite an...
It was 2003.
Was it 2003?
Yeah.
Was it 2003?
Yeah.
I don't remember the time, but anyway, so, no, you run a great operation, and just the building permit fees on this project, don't wince, are a boon to the city, so good luck, and I'll support your permit.
Thank you.
Council Charis.
Thank you. Ms. Waugh, I just want to thank you for coming to the council and doing it properly and not just trying to backdoor. You've been, as Council Greville says, a great friend to Peabody. Any city in town around us would love to have your dealership in their city and town, and I just want to thank you for staying here in Peabody and doing the things you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Waugh, I would also add my thanks for your generosity over the years, it's notorious. Mr. President, through you to Council Greville, there's a late communication, actually moved to receive the email from Council Turco dated August 15, 2017. So moved.
Motion to receive, approve.
Through you to Council Greville, there was a issue raised here, not an issue, but a request raised here by Council Turco with respect to delivery. Are you prepared to address that in here?
Yeah, I've talked to Warren about that. First of all, they get deliveries of vehicles there already, and Council, Council Turco was worried about deliveries on the main road, and there are no deliveries that are done on the main road. Because of the setback of the driveway and where he receives the inventory, you're far off the road with any deliveries that go in there.
So, there's no need for a condition because this is a non-issue as far as the dimension? I think Council Turco is concerned that the dimensions of the lot wouldn't allow for off-street delivery, but you're saying that they do?
No, they have, he's got plenty of room.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
The trucks come right into the facility.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Waugh, thank you for everything you do for us, specifically the Peabody Ed Foundation. You've been a great friend, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Before we close the public hearing, I know Warren's a guy who likes to fly under the radar, but I'd like to thank you. I also know that you've been very supportive of the local Chabad and what you do for them, so, and so thank you very much. Once again, Council Greville.
Thank you, Council President. Move the closed public hearing.
Hear the motion, all in favor? Any opposed, a vote?
I'd like to move the granting of the Class 1 motor vehicle license to Peabody Motorsports, Inc., doing business as BMW at 7th Centennial Drive for the purpose of being able to sell new cars. So moved.
The motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Manning, Martin.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Greville.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Motion carries 9 to 1, two absent.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, item 4B, this is continuation for a special permit for entertainment license for Metro Bowl. Council McGinn.
Mr. President, I would move to receive, I'm sorry, move to continue this public hearing to September 14. So moved, and on the motion, the petitioner has consented to this continuous for the record.
Heard the motion on the floor, moving until September 14. All in favor and opposed, a vote? Thank you. Next on the agenda, reports of the committees, reports, committee of the whole. Earlier this evening, we had a, we had a meeting, committee of the whole, and we had two items that we covered. The first was, we had the Mr. Glenn Truera, the manager of the Peabody Municipal Light Plant, come down and make a presentation with one of his employees regarding two projects. The first is regarding the LED streetlight conversion project. That entails 6,000 public streetlights, changing from high-pressure sodium to LED streetlights. It is going quite well. They are, I believe, they got a grant, and the grant was from the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, and the grant paid for 50% price of the fixture, and that total amount was between $400,000 and $450,000, depending on the actual number of fixtures they do put up. They do feel that this will be cost savings for a number of reasons. The average light bulb now needs to be replaced every three and a half years versus the lightbulbs that will be going in will be, they go for 20 years, and the light class themselves is a 30% to 40% decrease. They'll also be saving on manual labor as far as going out and changing the light bulbs, gas, things of that nature. So, they were very, very excited about this, and if the public would like to see them in action right now, I've been, they reported that center field, which is Reed, Trask, and Downing Road, those have been all put in, so if someone like to drive in those neighborhoods in the evening, they can see how those LED lights are looking. And by the way, they did do a trial, they did a trial last year, they received one call, it wasn't a complaint, and when they did do the trial, I know they did it right around the corner from my neighborhood, they put up a little sign explaining what the LED light was, so if people noticed it when they went home that night. And as I said, it's been highly successful, no complaints at all, and they do expect it to save them many dollars in future years. The second report from the PMLP was manual meters, going from, excuse me, from fully, from manual meters to fully automated two-way communication meters. This project is 55% done. There are 26,000 manual meters that need to be replaced. It should be done in the end of 2017 or early 2018, and once again, this is just gonna be, allow them to be much more efficient. Once again, they don't have to do manual reading anymore. Also, if there's ever an outage, one of these features is, is that they will know, rather than someone calling in and saying, "Our lights are out," they will get a two-way communication from the meter saying that lights are out in the area, so that should allow them to repair any, any light outages quicker and more rapidly. And once again, they are saving on eliminating positions that had transportation costs, automobile, taxes, and gas, and once again, so those two... automobile, taxes, and gas, and once again, so those two, those two projects are well underway, and they just want to bring up the city council on it. And the second presentation we had tonight was regarding the improvements, both audio, visual, and aesthetically, to the auditorium here, and this project is going to be happening right after we basically finish this meeting tonight, for the public, many who've come down here to the, to the Wigan Auditorium, it's always been a little bit difficult sometimes with the sound, so we got a, there is a two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that is going towards this project, a hundred and two thousand dollars was a grant that was applied for through various employees in the city, and we did get that grant, we heard from a company by the name of By Request Communication, who was a consultant working on behalf of the city, he went over, basically, everything's gonna be wireless, it'll be a Bose speaker system, and also be ADA compliant, so if people who have hard of hearing come down to hearing meetings, they can pick up a set of mic, a set of earbuds and put them in and be able to hear the meeting appropriately. And the second part of that was visual enhancements, and those visual enhancements is, we are going to be putting in two new screens, behind us will be a new screen on the back wall, in front of the auditorium will be a screen that will be able to be seen by everyone during public meetings, if it's appropriate, and we also have laser-based projectors, which I believe, if I remember correctly, had a life hood of expectancy of probably, expect, excuse me, a life hood expectancy of fifteen to twenty thousand hours, so he assured us that, we would certainly get our money's worth. So those are the two, two presentations that we had tonight, and that was the committee of the whole from the PMLP, and regarding the audiovisual enhancements. Thank you. Any questions? Very good. Next on the agenda, we're gonna move to item six, motions, orders, and resolutions, and at this time, I wanted to announce that I am putting the, I am, I am creating an ad hoc medical marijuana subcommittee, and the reason for this is quite frankly, that it is upon us, I have done my due diligence to try and make sure that this council has as much information as possible to make a proper decision, to bring the public up to date, currently, we have come up with an ordinance, deciding as a, as a council where we wanted the medical marijuana facility to go, and the next, the next piece of this puzzle is now vetting the various entities that would like to propose a medical marijuana facility. I felt it was important, for a number of reasons, and I did ask to be on the ad hoc medical marijuana committee, I've asked Counselor Gravel, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Gould, Counselor Turco to serve, and I will be the chair of this committee, and they bought, they have graciously accepted to serve. If I could get a motion, I'd like to, let me see, a motion, I, I had a late communication that all of you have received, many documents, the RMD application process overview, the letter of non-opposition, and also an article regarding the town of, excuse me, the town of Needham, Mass., who, and what they did in their process, so if I can just get a motion to accept those late communications?
Motion to receive those three items, Mr. President.
Thank you. In addition, we also received a late communication from the mayor that's on your desk regarding, motion, motion to receive regarding, the city council will be directed with now giving out the letter of non-opposition, if someone could, motion to receive, and I'll explain a little bit more in detail.
Mr. President, motion to receive.
And I, basically, what, the letter of non-opposition is the first piece of the puzzle, and with the letter of non-opposition, it, it can go one of two ways, or maybe two ways, but either the council, or the governing body, or the mayor can give out the letter of non-opposition, and this letter that we've received tonight, the mayor has, he's basically, he is asking, he is directing that the council will give out the letter of non-opposition. So that is really one of the main reasons why I want to do the, the ad hoc subcommittee, because what I felt, feel is important, is that, it's important that we have some type of, for lack of a better word, a report card, to understand how to judge these facilities that have come before us, so the, the subcommittee will be working on trying to come up with a criteria to help, to help all the councils out. Obviously, earlier, you folks, I believe, also received, Clerk Spadell sent out the ordinance that we passed a few months ago regarding medical marijuana, it was six dot thirteen dot one. Within that ordinance itself, there is some specific criteria that is used, there are guidelines in there, that is, that has made mention of ways to, to judge, grade the presentations that are gonna come before us. Understand that, letter of non-opposition does not take the place of the special permit. Once a company, once a entity gets a letter of non-opposition from this council, they will then have to enter, enter a host agreement that will be negotiated with the mayor, and it's my understanding and my expectation, that that host agreement the mayor will be negotiating, that he'll be willing to take some, some input from the city council, and then also, once that host agreement is then negotiated and made public, then they will come back before us for the special permit. So the expectation, obviously, is if that we have granted one entity a letter of non-opposition, then they will then host, get the host agreement, come back before us for the special permit, and I'll, I would say that if we've done our job properly and vetted it, I would assume that that special permit application would, would most likely be approved, there could be modifications, things of that nature, but as you can see, it's a process that is, is somewhat detailed, but also has a little bit of wiggle room, it's not, you know, strictly specific, so I thought it was important, as I said, to put a, put together, you know, a subcommittee for this particular purpose, and we will be planning on setting up the next, the next meeting on the fourteenth, it's my expectation that we'll be having a meeting of the subcommittee on medical marijuana to start the process of the things I have laid out tonight. Also, what I also feel is very important, is that the process be open and transparent, and I think that between the subcommittee and the, the letter of non-opposition hearings that we have, what'll basically happen is, is the, the entities will come before us, right now, it looks like we have two, we could have three entities, they'll come before the entire council, they'll make a presentation, and then obviously, we as a council will decide, you know, how we want to handle it and how we want to give that letter of non-opposition. And we will discuss this further, but I just want to give a little bit of brief explanation of the, the purpose of it and how I see it proceeding. That's basically it. Let me just check my other notes, just to see, I will, I do have some, when we come into motions, order, resolutions, I will wait for my place, but we do have some submittals tonight, we do have two letters of non-opposition that are being submitted, that I recommend that we receive as a council, understand that a letter for, a letter of non-opposition is not a special permit, the clock does not tick, that goes at our, basically, at the, at the, at the rate of speed on, that we want it to go to, so it's not like a special permit, it's not where sixty-five days and starts ticking, it's a letter of non-opposition that we basically will set up a meeting to hear these entities to make their presentation. You'll also notice that there is a application for a special permit, and I will act on that when the appropriate time in the agenda, and I will not be receiving that, and at that point in time, I'll explain to the council why I will not be accepting that application this evening to you. And...
Point of order, I'm sorry, Counsel President, could you just repeat, I missed that, what are you not accepting this evening?
There is item eight, eight H. on the agenda, that is, that is a special permit application that has been submitted, and it's, it's incomplete, and I will get into more detail when that, when we move to that part of the meeting, I will not be accepting that special permit application, I'll be sending that back to the applicant for clarification, and also, I will, I have spoken to legal, but I will ask for a, a more detailed opinion from the city solicitor, and ask that that detailed opinion be in our hands by our next meeting on September fourteenth. Yes, Councilor Sinewitz?
I just want to understand, so, these two, these one or two companies comes to this council and makes a presentation about their facility, and then, based on what they tell us, we're supposed to sign off on a, a letter of non-opposition? That doesn't, so what does that give them? That allows them to move forward?
Correct, that, that allows them to move forward to state, there could, there could be up to, if you remember, there are four parcels, so I don't want to say, there could be a total of four, right now, we have two that are submitted this evening, but that's correct, they will submit the letter of non-opposition, they need that to go, go forward to the state, from my understanding.
Okay, so where does the negotiating for the host committee, I mean, for the host, hosting fee and all these other goodies, the mayor's doing that, most likely, is that done before and that's presented with their application? Do you, do you know what I'm saying, or is that done, if we say, yeah, we, after they, and I don't know what the reason would be to deny, whether, you know, maybe it's background, I, I don't know, so at that point, do we, it's all set and done, or do, is it go back, then they negotiate, it's kind of back, wouldn't be backwards, right? We wouldn't approve it, then they negotiate a hosting fee and all that, that would be done before it actually comes to this council?
I believe what'll happen is that, when they make their presentations, they will then, they will then make their first presentation for their hosting fee, for their hosting, for the host application, that does not mean that it is ironclad, that the things that can be, it's a negotiation, so they can make their opening salvo, so to speak, with what they, I mean, there are certain things that are in there that we do get automatically, I believe it's three percent of gross sales, things of that nature, but there are certain things that do come in the hosting agreement, and there are other things, as you talked about, it could be funding for Peabody Health Collaborative, things of that nature, that they then can, then add on and get into, but they will basically be making their presentation with also their host agreement.
So, so this is, I guess this is, as Dave worded, this is my conundrum, this letter states, "The letter of non-opposition may be signed by the chief executive officer or administrative officer as appropriate for the desired municipality," and who would that be? That would be the mayor?
Well, no, if you look at it...
Or the city council.
Correct.
Or the city council, so what does he need us for? He can go in, negotiate, the, sign off, a letter of non-support, and submit them to the state, what does he need us for?
Correct, except for the fact that he has put a letter on everyone's desk tonight saying that he's abdicating that authority to the city council, if you, if you look on your desk, there's a letter from the mayor saying that he is abdicating that and giving that to the city council, to allow the city council to grant the letter of non-opposition, and if you read, and I know it was late communication, but you'll see, Needham, the town selectman, they chose, they gave, they granted the letter of non-opposition, I think it's firstly, a better situation for the council, I'll be very frank about that, I like to see the council be involved with that letter of non-opposition, because it's, it's not a special permit, special permit is a totally separate process, but let's just say maybe they're cousins.
And, and just briefly reading this, this has to be really vetted, because there's, there's language in here that if, if, if they agree to a host fee, and whatever they're agreeing to, then if another facility comes in and is given a lesser deal, they can lower their amounts, there's all sorts of language that, you know, that, that benefits them, the facility and doesn't benefit the city, so I, look, you know, I'd feel, you know, if, if the mayor's not gonna negotiate the whole host agreement and all these things by himself, because I almost feel uncomfortable, it feel like we're shaking people down, you know, you'll give us fifty grand, well, they'll give us a hundred, you'll give us this for the schools, I'll give you that for the schools, and it's kind of, it's awkward, and I don't want to sit there and, and put one against the other and see what I can, you know, it just, almost seems a little unethical, and that's just, I, I don't know how the process, we've never done this before, and I don't know if it'll be done before I'm gone and me and Mike are gone, but I don't know how it's gonna go down, but it should be an interesting interaction, I don't know how other communities do it, now, if, if two more jump in, you're gonna, you could have four application, excuse me, four applications for that, that one property?
So the, we, we zone four pieces of property, so that absolutely could be, could be four, I mean, there'll be a, a point where we have to go forward, I mean, I'm sure after this hearing, and some of the media will get, those people will know, but they, they know already, they've known that their property's been vetted, you know, I understand what you're saying, Counselor, I think that's the reason why I'm trying to be transparent and set up a subcommittee to have everything out in the open, because this is, you know, new territory, and I think we're going to have to ask the city solicitor to come in, I think that, I agree with you, the host agreement is absolutely one piece of it, but it is only one piece of it, it can be background checks, it can be ties to the community, I think that's what the purpose of the subcommittee is to do, is to not just say, okay, who gives us the most dollars wins, or who gets their application wins, I think the purpose is to try and vet it, so that you feel, that everyone feels comfortable with it, but this is, this is a process that is upon us and put upon us, and I think we have to act accordingly, and I feel this is the proper way to do it.
And just, just one more point, I'll move on, in this host agreement, we haven't even got into recreational, and I know we made a motion to put it on the ballot, now that wants to be kicked out, and it's a vote, but is, in the host agreement, can, is this still on the table for the medical not to sell recreational? Or is that going to be taken out once we approve it, once somebody gets in there, and then the, the state approves recreational, can they file to the state, or has it come to this council to say, "We want to sell recreational now," and that's a whole other weather, because it's in a medical facility, but the city ban, I, I don't know what the, the language is gonna be, the state's making changes on the fly, and they just changed this, now, it doesn't have to go on the ballot, now it's saying it's a vote of this council to ban recreational if, if we choose to do so. So I, I'm just, there's a lot of issues to discuss, and it's nice to have all the information in front of you instead of a, it's changing all the time, and the laws are changing, and there'll be many lawsuits, so be prepared, not just us and all communities, I'm sure. Thank you.
You're welcome, Counselor Manning.
Thank you, Mr. President, yes, the late communication that we received from the mayor this evening, the last sentence says, says that he, I direct that option B of citing profile, and he mentions the CMA law, so he's directing the option that we, the city council, approve the letters of non-opposition, as opposed to him, and that would be fine, but the, the rub that I have or see is that, if I understood you correctly, Counsel President, you said that the mayor will be handling solely the host agreement, and so, that to me, I have made some calls to other councils in surrounding communities that have medicinal marijuana functioning, and the first question they asked me was, well, what is in your host agreement? And so I looked through the applications that we have, and one application that we have, that you're gonna explain to us later, that they're going forward requesting special permit to be heard, you're saying it's incomplete, that one has a more complete example of a host agreement, however, it's not a host agreement specific to Peabody, it's an example that they submitted, I think, with Swansea, they must have one out in Swansea. The other applicant, who was looking for the letter of non-opposition but is not requesting to be, have a hearing yet, offered no, no even example of, or, or draft of what the host agreement would be, so my counterparts that I spoke to in other communities, that was their, well, how are you going to know which, how you're acting in the best interest of the city if you don't know what the host agreement is, if you don't even have it presented to you? So that was their advice to me, which now, there's a rub there, because we're going to approve or disapprove letters of non-opposition... to approve or disapprove letters of non-opposition, yet we're going to have no part in formulating or having any knowledge in advance of this action by the council, which now has been delegated or directed to us by the mayor, and, but we will have no say, and we'll be told after the fact of, after our actions, of what the host, community host agreement will be, the host community agreement will be. So that, to me, is beyond a conundrum. I, that doesn't work for me. But I'd be interested also to hear what made the application incomplete, the one that they're asking us to put forward. So I think we're heading down a slippery slope, which, of course, I mean, as we already know, this, that, there's a lot, a lot of money involved in this, more than anything anyone's ever seen come down the pike. And of course, we're going to have lawsuits, there was one in Gloucester, the applicant who did not get approval sued both the city and the applicant that won the approval, and then the one that won settled the agreement for both the city and the, and the, yeah. So no matter what we do, I think there are lawsuits coming. But I want to move forward feeling confident in my piece of responsibility here, moving forward, and right now, I don't, with what's before us right now. I was before this evening to move forward on a lot of these pieces of, that are before us, to move forward as the legislative body here in Peabody, but I was confident before in what to do, and now I'm completely confused.
Thank you, Counsel. I didn't want to interrupt you, but actually, in the interest of transparency, and they, as they did it in Lynn, and we do have a seven-page ordinance, and I'm not going to lie to you folks, I've gone through it, there's pieces I understand, there's pieces I don't, but it's my expectation, and I also fully support what you're saying, that in Lynn, we would have to sign off on the host agreement, I believe it's tied in with the special permit, so I would not sign off on anything. Once again, the letter of non-opposition just allows them to come forward with the special permit process, they have to go to the state, but as they did in Lynn, and we'll try and get more specifics, the city...